Order at 7:03 PM. The roll call. Laura Breakstone.
Present.
Andrew Carlson.
Here.
Richard Driver.
Here.
Tim Pennage.
Here.
Lauren Hirsch, here. Ann Hill and Carrie Steinbach are absent today. Prior to starting, may I have a motion to nominate myself as President Pro temp and Amy Kotnick as Recording Secretary Pro temp for this hearing?
So moved.
All in favor? And the next meeting, who's on the next page?
Yeah.
Uh, all in favor? The motion passes. We can now transition into the BINA hearing. The board will begin a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposal to sell bonds in the amount of five hundred and seven thousand, five hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district. All persons desiring to be heard will have an opportunity to present written or oral testimony with respect to such proposal to sell such bonds. Now, for the discussion, the reason for the proposed issuance of the bonds is for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district. Is there any discussion or are there any additional comments from members of the board? Amy, have we had my own?
I should, what's the timeline for when, again, just as a refresher for when?
There's a thirty day petition period before the board can approve a parameters resolution. And then one, so that will be done in November. And then the bonds are most likely to be sold in December.
Okay.
And close the chain.
Okay. So November is the last board action that needs to be.
Uh, yes.
So, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Amy, are there any other written testimony concerning proposed issuance of the bonds that have come in?
No.
To the public, is there any oral testimony or public comment concerning the proposed issuance of the bonds? Here. Uh, all persons desiring to be heard have been given an opportunity to present oral and written testimony with respect to proposed issuance of the bonds. May I have a motion to adjourn the hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
Amy, can we have a roll call, please? Laura Breakstone?
Yes.
Tim Pennage?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
The motion carries. The hearing is adjourned.
You should probably wait until something.
Seven fifteen. Okay. By Board of Education meeting, I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:15 PM. And on for roll call. Andrew Carlson.
Here.
Richard Driver.
Here.
Lauren Hirsch, here. Laura Breakstone, here. Tim Pennage.
Here.
And Ann Hill and Carrie Steinbach are both absent today. Prior to starting, may I have a motion to nominate myself as President Pro temp and Amy Kotnick as Recording Secretary Pro temp for this meeting?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Now we can transition into our regular meeting. We are gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
At the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag of the United States of America and through the Republic of Canada stands. Nation, God, and this one, the liberty and justice of all.
Now for our mission, vision, and motto. Richard explains.
I would be glad to do that. Um, our mission, ensure academic achievement and personal growth for all students through innovative and engaging educational opportunities. Our vision is an inclusive community of motivated learners who are inspired to change the world through exploration and collaboration. And our motto is excellence in education, enthusiasm for life, every student, every day.
Thank you. Uh, now it's time for public comment. We welcome comments from our staff, parents, and constituents. The board president will determine the format and ground rules for comments in the best interest of the audience and agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone has anything to say? And, nope. Alright, time for reports. There is not a PTO report. I think the first report is Alliance.
Hello, hello, hello. This is gonna be a nice, short one. So, first of all, um, this will be my last time doing this report because after four or five years, Greg Watson will be taking over the presidency of the Alliance from me and Jennifer Sparty-Finn will be taking over the treasury. That's as of twenty-five seconds ago when I said it online. The main things we've got going on at the time are we've launched the fall grant cycle. Um, we have on December sixth is our kind of big event coming up, um, at the Gallery in Lake Forest where we're gonna be doing a live auction for some of the artwork that we have. There was, or it hasn't come out yet, I don't believe, but there is an article coming out in the.
It's gonna be the November Community Bulletin.
Thank you very much. In the November Community Bulletin, it'll be coming out. That's where you will see President Greg Watson speaking. Beyond that, we've, you know, had Sunrise Rocks last year. We are doing well financially, so looking forward to the grants. Uh, for the December sixth event, we are, and this will be in the Community Bulletin, so we are kind of pinching it as helping to raise money towards the districts looking to fulfill the kind of revamp of all of the AV stuff, which I know from Kevin is like a quarter of a million dollar budget or item, line items. So we are not saying, hey, we're looking to raise two hundred fifty thousand dollars, nor are we saying, hey, we're looking to raise thirty thousand dollars for microphones because by the time we get the microphones and the district raises the rest of the money, those microphones might be the funds. So we are raising money to sort of earmark that, that's how I'm marketing that. We also, the Susan Armbruster Fund, she passed away last year, and there was a call from some of her former colleagues and friends and family to, uh, raise money for a bench in her honor. The money that came in was, uh, five times basically the bench amount. So there is now, uh, like there's a Jennifer Harris Fund in the Alliance, there's now a Susan Armbruster Fund that we're working on sort of nailing down, kind of like mission for Jennifer Harris is for reading enrichment, literacy, et cetera. We're trying to figure out sort of what the Armbruster Fund should be about. And, yeah, is all I have. Does anyone have any questions before I go?
I just wanna thank you, Michael, for your leadership over the last.
Pleasure.
Five years of the Alliance. You have, and the Alliance have done a lot for a lot of our classrooms and families and kids. We really appreciate your.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, moving on, there's no president's report tonight, so on to you after.
Yeah, just so wanted to give a brief update on the family survey that we texted out about our kind of progress monitoring we're doing on how parents feel informed or whether parents feel informed about their own child's progress. It's a goal we've decided to put out for ourselves this year to get better at doing that. We had a hundred and sixty-five responses to the survey, which is really good. I think the texting made a big difference. People just kind of clicked on it. It's a very short survey. Um, all the grades were represented with just a, like a minor, um, like, we have a bigger group in fifth grade, but just by a little bit, like sixteen percent. The rest are about eleven, ten to eleven or twelve percent. So every grade was represented. About sixty-five or sixty-six percent feel very well informed or mostly informed. So we have about thirty-five percent that are in those bottom three somewhat slightly or not at all informed. In the top two categories, anyone who answered very well informed or mostly informed got one question, and that was, what updates are you receiving that make you feel so informed? And those overwhelmingly were emails directly from the teacher, their child's own comments or report cards and conferences. And then any parent that answered in the bottom three categories got a question about what would you like to see happen more so that you could feel more informed? And overwhelmingly, emails or messages directly from the teacher, their child's own comments or schoolwork sent home. Those were kind of the top areas. So both buildings have access to all the raw data. They're looking at, they're building leadership teams. There's some comments that parents made, um, about some things that were problem solving around and just trying to try to get better at this throughout the year. I'll do a bigger presentation once we've done all four. We're planning on doing two before winter break and two after winter break, and then just kind of presenting on our progress. Good to hear. Any questions?
Right, on to the discussion and presentations. Uh, up first is Austin Johnson.
She just says, a reminder, we did, um, decide together what we wanted for our presentations this year, um, at the board meetings. And this was a top vote getter for hearing how, um, safety and security are going in our district. So appreciate us and being here to give us an. Did you do your presentation on YouTube? I'm just.
Sorry. Sorry.
You love tech.
Yeah.
It's weird. I know. Do you want me to move? Would it be better if I connected? Is it an issue with your?
Yeah, it was on there and then it went black.
And it's also like holding the yes button.
There, stop.
I just turned it on.
Don't do it. Don't. Imagine if I.
I did share it with you.
You did? You wanna see if I can do it?
Yep.
Need one. Uh, it says it's already in use. Are you connected to it constantly? It's really connected. Does your True North screen? But we could switch it around. Do you wanna do that?
Yeah, maybe.
Alright.
Well, they try to figure out, in fact, we go on to the True North.
Yeah.
That's a great.
Um, okay, so our True North update, as you are aware, we are working diligently to reorganize, um, True North. And we, uh, a small working group presented the redlined and adjusted Articles of Agreement to the last, the Leadership Council at the last meeting, I think it was September nineteenth. We had a very positive response, meaning there were very few questions. Uh, most superintendents have prepped their Leadership Council number very well. At this point, where we are in the process is each district then needs to bring back those Articles of Agreement, bring back the discussion to their own boards to kind of settle on our intention to declare at the November meeting of whether or not we intend to remain in the cooperative. My recommendation is that we remain in the cooperative. We've been working really hard to do that. At this time, I believe we have fifteen of the eighteen districts that are solidly committed based on just kind of discussions that we've had in open or between superintendents. Line View for sure, I believe, is still going to withdraw. And then there are two other districts that are still in consideration. It should not impact our financial model at all to only have fifteen districts. And so my recommendation is that we continue to stay with a cooperative and the adjusted structure that I presented before with all of the changes to the governance, um, the financial model, as well as the program moving to one therapeutic day school and moving to that tuition-based model. So, um, with that, is there any board members that feel you want to discuss that or think about proceeding with withdrawal?
Say, fifteen of eighteen?
Fifteen of eighteen are looking solidly committed. And I know Dick had asked a question about how many students we have in the program in our place at True North right now, and that's four. So, um, but that will not be the case in a few years. We don't know if we'll have more students, but we have a couple moving out. Um, but we still have students accessing, um, services as well through True North, so that will be able to continue for most of our students. There's just a few programs that are sunsetting. Do I have, um, board consensus to announce at the November meeting that we intend to stay with the cooperative? Okay. So what that will entail is that our November meeting, we will have to vote on a resolution to rescind our intent to withdraw. So, and then we would do that after we have gotten kind of verbal consensus from the districts at the Leadership Council meeting. And then once we have the amount of districts who are committed to stay in, then we'll know what resolution will be passing in December, which would be to reorganize and adopt the new Articles of Agreement or to proceed with dissolution. I highly doubt we're gonna be looking at dissolution. I think at this point, we're gonna be looking at, um, reorganization. And then the new executive committee, which will take the place as the sort of operational governance, you know, body, will have a short meeting after the December meeting to organize. That'll be the superintendents to organize, have their organizational meeting right in December, and then begin meeting in January. And that is my True North update.
So this would be going to affect for the next school year?
Yes. So the only part of the adjusted articles that's gonna take place mid-year is the shift in the governance structure, just so that we can have the superintendents around the table leading the reorganization. Um, there's gonna be a lot of staffing issues that are gonna be happening, all of that stuff in the spring. Everything else, the new finance model, the therapeutic day school, like those kinds of things will happen in the summer, so between this school year and next.
Uh, thanks for all your hard work and seeing this through to a logical, you know, a logical restructuring that, that I think will help everybody.
Yeah, we're really proud of the work. And just as an update, we did, and are talking with the two interim superintendents, Jim and Jimmy, um, Jim Nelson and Jimmy Gannell, to have them stay on for an additional year because we do not feel like we'll be ready to select a new executive director when we really haven't even gotten in deep on the reorganization. So, um, there's a small group negotiating an extension on their contract for another year so they can help us through that. So I think that stability is gonna make a big difference. So thank you for your support as well. I know it's been a roller coaster for the boards. And thank you to you and Tracy, because it's so much work. It's a lot of time, yeah, you guys have put into it. Yeah, Tracy's gotten so much experience.
We appreciate you.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Are you ready? Okay. We're good. Alright, good with our safety. Back to Austin.
You're gonna try and, you're gonna have this.
Oh, I'm gonna do this. Okay.
Slittery goes small, we can't hear.
What did she say?
Slittery goes small, so.
Nothing with that, nothing bad here.
Never, no. Okay?
Alright. Thanks for having me. Sorry that messed up that great introduction. Highly coveted presentation that people wanted to hear. First, I wanted to start with, you know, an appreciation for being a school and a district that has culture within their sa- uh, the sa- culture of safety with embedded within the district. I mean, our parents really wanna know what's going on with safety. They care deeply about the buildings being safe and secure. Uh, our teachers, they're on board and they're promoting that culture of safety every day. They work through things, they train, they do all the things that we need to do. So, uh, we're, we're in a great spot in that sense that we think about this often and we make sure that our buildings are safe and secure, those students, staff, and anybody visiting. So just starting with that being said, uh, just a couple of things that point out that we've already done last year, just as a reminder. You know, we started to really work on our terminology. As you can see, those are the terms that we use. We put a, uh, got a classroom action guide in every single room that could even be found. It gives quick bullet points to the teachers on what they need to do in each of these scenarios so that they can remind the students and really be the leaders in an emergency situation. We put a, just a room located, um, in case there's visitors or somebody in the room doesn't know where they are and an emergency does happen, they can call nine-one-one, tell the exact address and what room they're in. Uh, we continue to communicate with our community, put together a safety guide and sent that out last year. Uh, it can still be found on our website, so there's a lot of information embedded on our safety and security website, which Kevin has helped with. And we also got some numerous people trained, about twenty-nine to thirty people trained in CPR and AED last year to go along with our cardiac emergency response plan that we had to put into place. So those are just a reminder of some things we did and things that we're moving on to. The biggest one that has come up this year, um, over the summer, you all know that we put in a wireless locks and some hardwired locks throughout our buildings. These are in every single classroom, some of our offices. This is what they look like. There's two different forms you can see in the wireless lock. And then the big black card reader, that would be a hardwired, um, lock that you would see around the building and the district. And I think they're working great. I, I appreciate all the work that I've done with Jay and Kevin and Andy, because it really takes the technology team, facilities. Obviously, Jay, Jay knows it in depth as well. He works within the program and the software all the time. We kind of work on that together without having everybody on board, but they're working great for the teachers. The feedback that I'm getting is that they appreciate it. It's fast, it's easy. You just simply scan your fob right over it and it opens the door. Did a quick little walk around today at both the buildings and doors are closed, which is great. There are some open, and we openly talked to the middle school, uh, teachers and the elementary teachers. They're getting used to having doors closed at all times. It's not that they don't want to or that they're, you know, going against anything. They just, they're like, oh, I just forgot. So I'll walk by and, uh. They just feel like, oh, I just forgot. So I'll walk by and principals will walk by, and they'll just wave at them and close the door, and they're like, oh, thanks, thanks for the reminder. So doors are locked and closed. I would say well over ninety-five percent of the doors easily are closed and locked at all times, keeping our kids safe. We know that's the safest way to keep our kids and staff safe behind doors. So I really appreciate the staff for their efforts on that. So this is, we continue to refine some of the things that we need to do. We've connected our, our ability to lock down the building, lock down all the doors, sound off an announcement that tells the building that they're in lockdown all at once. It deactivates the cards and only gives the ability for police and fire to come in and respond. So it's, it's a really awesome system that we have in place and really appreciate that, you know, the money that went towards putting this into our buildings. It's, it's a great thing to have. Another thing we started this year is Safety Week. Early on in the year, we, we sent out a video every day, really tried to engage the community, the parents, to talk with what they were going to do the next day, the drill they were gonna go through. We had the police and fire do a video. So the welcome video will start off with me kind of welcoming and saying hi and going over a couple of things. If I'll see something, say something. We involved the fire department. They did a fire evacuation video and a weather video. And then I did another Run, Hide, Defend video, and we finished up the week with our police department doing a great job on bicycle and pedestrian safety, which continues to kind of unfold with the e-bike situation and, you know, not riding those e-bikes down in the business district, which I know is a tough thing, but it's, it's good and being publicized by them, and they're doing a great job there. So Safety Week, I think, was a hit. We're gonna move it a little bit later next year. We decided that as we were just getting into our routines in a building, and kids are still trying to figure out what's going on, teachers are getting in a groove, we wanted everything to be settled, kind of let the school year get going. So we'll start that. It'll be, I think, in early October is when we decided. Next year, as we're gonna have Safety Week, we'll do the same sort of thing. Might even have some new videos and new features in there as well. So looking forward to continue on that tradition. One thing we're gonna get done this year, which will be great, is we're gonna get back to working with our police, Run, Hide, Defend, or active shooters within the side of the building. So in January, we have a couple Wednesday teacher meetings, and we're going to do a Run, Hide, Defend drill. This is not with students. This is after school. So the buildings will be empty. It starts with a little bit of a PowerPoint, going over what is run, what do you do during a run, what would you do in a hide, what would you do to defend, and talking through the option-based scenarios that teachers have, and what could they do. We'll answer a lot of questions. It'll be a lot of give and take, you know, answer me, ask anything, kind of what-if questions. We'll go through that, talk about it, what they could do should we happen to run into an unfortunate situation like that. And then we might even do another scenario. There's other scenarios that we can run through. It doesn't, it's not all active shooter training. It's not all about just that. We'll do other scenarios during that time, such as what if somebody was in our building and wasn't wearing a lanyard like we wear during the day? What would you do? How would you approach them, those types of things? So we'll run through that with Sam. So looking forward to doing that with the police in January. The next slide just kind of goes over that. We, we had some safety projects that we really wanted to get going. This was mentioned last year. We wanted the wireless card access on the doors. We got that done. We wanted to get Safety Week going. We got that done. We want to start a district safety committee. We're meeting with parents and the community on November fifth at the library, which we have that. We're looking forward to. The teachers have done a great job with our lock door policy. And obviously, I just mentioned that the Run, Hide, Defend training is coming up in January. So all the things that we wanted to do, we're doing. And then future things we're looking into is just the continuous full integration of all of our systems. So there's a lot of technology that goes into our systems, the cameras, the card readers, everything just being combined into one and how we can get alerts. We're gonna continue to refine that, so that's in progress. Looking into some new radios. We're, we're really, we have some older radios. We're looking into how we can find some new radios and how they may even integrate into our safety system. So that's in the process. The Lake Bluff Police Department also is working on their connectivity within our building. The last thing we want is the police department to be in our building and responding to an emergency and then drop their call or not be able to communicate with dispatch. So we're trying to find those areas and working through that with them and the radios they have. We need to get all their staff trained and stop the bleed, which we will get that done, because our nurses are also trainers and able to do that. And need some upgrades in our vestibule. We may even look at moving the guest visitor system into the vestibule, so we don't even have to let people into our building. They can sign in before they get into our building. You know, it's, we are safe. When people get into our offices, they can't get out without us allowing them out and giving them that permission, but I'd rather see that happen in our vestibule. So we're looking into ways that that could occur as well, along with some new video intercoms. You can see there at the bottom, we're looking into, that we'll be able to communicate with them, anybody coming into school outside the building, and it's a beautiful camera footage of that entrance area as well. So a lot of good things there. The other thing I just wanna highlight is, you know, we continue to promote, and I appreciate Lisa and Rebecca in Libertyville, we're kind of on our speaker run here in the circuit. We're, we're going out and talking about what it's like for small districts to come together and have a shared safety director. And I think we've seen success. We were able to speak down in Springfield at one of the superintendent functions. We're gonna be going to Triple I.
Carrie and Tim will be helping.
So, yeah, so really, I appreciate the, what we're doing together again. This is, safety and security really is a, an effort from everybody. It's not a one-person show. And we have the buy-in. We have things going in the right direction, and we'll continue to do things. And I'll keep assessing and auditing the building and seeing what we need to do to move forward in a safe and secure way.
Just to add to that, too, one thing, I'm glad you mentioned the presentations. We were kind of surprised we had superintendents from our area who came to see our presentation. We thought, just to be kind and support us, but actually, they were like, no, no, we're looking into this model, too. And we really like how you're doing it and how it's going. And the other thing I wanna mention, although it's not specific to Lake Bluff, but Austin is, along with two other directors of safety in the area, kind of leading the way for the LC Smart initiative and the Go Kits and the reunification plans. And I just have to commend him for taking on that additional responsibility. It's going to be helpful, not just to us, but everyone. Reunification is a beast to plan and to find places that will take your district in the event of an emergency and allow you to set up an entire reunification system. And so I think it's great that we're all working together on that. But I just wanna highlight that Austin's talent is evident as he's leading in that group as well. So we're just really grateful to have him here. Any questions?
All right. There's also things that we accomplished last year. I mean, little things, but they all add up. I think we improved the windows with.
Reflective stickers on the outside to.
Yeah, with the room things and the place, and all those little things add up. But I did read in one study where the, the one most effective deterrent is the closed lock door.
Yes.
And, you know, that an intruder's just not, doesn't wanna take the time to try to get through. So I appreciate your emphasis and continued emphasis on the policy of keeping the doors closed. I mean, you know, and it's not easy, but I think we gotta get, you know, the students get involved in that, too.
Right.
You know. But I had one, one question. Have we ever thought about or considered what to do with like a lockdown drill during like the lunch period?
Yep.
Which is an extremely difficult, you know, time to do it. But, you know, just teachers have some idea of what to do during a lunch period or something. Is that feasible?
It is. It is. And we, we will do that. I'm continuously working with Nate and Joe and Kathy and Kelly. You know, and first, before I say that, I wanna thank them, because they're really, at every staff meeting, promoting the lock door policy, and the staff are buying in. So I'm, although I'm not there every day, when they have their meetings, they emphasize it. So appreciation to them to, for continuing that. I have been also, even with a fire drill, trying to change up and challenge the staff. So just, we have a fire drill the other day, last week, or I believe it was last week, and I blocked an exit, so that the staff had to think about what is their secondary exit? How would they get out? Should something be occurring in that area? So we are, I talked to the principals about when we can do these lockdown drills, and we will continue to push ourselves and do it at different times. They're really good in the planning phase with me of even recognizing, hey, let's, let's do some of these drills in the morning, some in the afternoon, and then we gotta hit the middle of the day as well. So we, we plan on doing it, absolutely. And it is important. You have the kids in a large, open space, and they need to know, we need to be able to communicate with them what to do. A couple other things just to add to that, we are doing, if you saw that terminology, the hold in place, the secure building and teach, all the teachers wear that. Not only are we doing the mandated drills of the fire drills, the tornado drills, the lockdown drills, we're calling those terms out during the day, so students hear it, and then the teachers can have conversations about, hey, if we hear a hold in place, here's what we would do. If we hear a secure building and teach, here's what we would do and why, and we're not in any danger. This is what we need to do during that scenario. So we are continuing to make those plans and prep our teachers and our students a little bit more.
And I, I'm just gonna put this, one other thing that I thought of is crisis communication. We have an app, Crisis Go, that is cumbersome, bit, and hard to navigate. And just having Austin as a kind of support for all of us figuring out how to use this app has been tremendously helpful, because it's, it's, we need to have it, but it's also not intuitive. There really isn't a very intuitive app for crisis communication that will send out alerts and give people instructions. But we've also had a lot more practice with that, too, and it's going a lot smoother. So just lots of things are going better. So, yeah, great investment.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on to IASB Resolutions Committee. So I did not have anyone send me any resolutions that you want to discuss. So I'm assuming that the whole board is good with the IASB recommended actions. If anyone has questions, though, Tim has, as our delegate, elected delegate, appointed delegate, watched the webinar. So if anyone has questions on these, he's fully prepared to go make our voice heard as a delegate assembly.
Otherwise, we'll go with their recommendation.
Everyone good?
Yep.
Good.
All right, on to Board Tour Reflections. So we did something new this year, and we typically have a board tour when a new board member comes on, but sometimes those are in the summer at different times when the building isn't totally full or busy. And so we offered the opportunity for board members to reach building in pairs with myself, from in most cases, two of the three I was able to make, but with our principals also, and just ask questions and see like a normal kind of spot of time in classrooms and get your questions answered. So I just thought it might be nice for anyone who did attend a board tour to share anything you saw that you thought was going with. You wanna go? We went together.
Yeah.
Go for it.
First, just thank you to all the principals and assistant principals for taking the time to show us around. I thought it was a wonderful experience. I was trying to go off of what Austin was just talking about when we were at the elementary school. As I noted, Lauren and I, I think both noticed that the doors were, were closed, and it seems a lot of the classrooms have doorbells now for when students are going to the restroom or something. So that was, was nice to see. It was also interesting to see, we went into all, if not most, if not all of the fourth grade classrooms and seeing the same lessons being taught, but in a different way. It, it was great just to see that in, in action and not something I think I appreciated before I saw that. And just having the opportunity to see the, the kids engaged, the teachers teaching enthusiastically, teaching the subjects was great. And then here at the middle school, it was good to see some of the new courses in action, the math course and the English course, just to pop in on those and see what was, was going on in those classes. So overall, I thought it was a great experience, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Piggybacking on what Tim had to say, it was the doorbells. I, one of my questions was, have we had any issues with the, you know, new locks and stuff? And it seemed like everyone was kind of in the groove with it, the doorbells on the doors. A lot of the classes have like an assigned door opener if somebody's knocking. And just what blew me away in the elementary was the scheduling. Like the fact that we went in four different classes, and every single class was doing language arts at the time, and we were able to see it. That was amazing. And then at the middle school, we were in the, at the top of the stairs during a passing period, and it was calm.
Yeah.
Like for all those kids to be walking around, and they all knew where they were going and knew the rules. And, I mean, it was, it was amazing. So I really appreciated having that time to go in. I think we went in probably plus twenty classrooms.
Oh, yeah.
Saw a lot of the new first-year teachers, which was great. You'd never expect that they were first-year teachers. But overall, it was, I really enjoyed it. Thank you.
I'd say, with the same with first-year teachers, I couldn't tell you who the first-year teachers were and who the experienced, you know, or quote-unquote experienced teachers, where everyone was sitting there, basically, for the fourth grade, they're all doing similar lessons, but you saw like a little different spin on each room with different teachers, lots of student engagement. Really liked going in and seeing students, not just sitting and learning, but actually talking to peers about what they were doing, you know, reflecting with each other on what they're learning. Teachers really getting involved with, you know, certain groups, floating around, checking in on students. Middle school, same thing, just lots of, you know, peer-to-peer learning in middle school. Just everyone, students seemed happy, seemed smiling. Definitely liked seeing visitors come in, especially at the elementary. That was fun. Just seeing just students learning and just being engaged and actually enjoying being in school was, was awesome.
I, I got to see some of the enrichment, which was really fun to see. I agree that the, like, I couldn't tell, like, I know who the new teachers are, but they were just, they were doing their thing. They were fantastic. And it was so much calmer than the elementary school when I was expecting. They just, they all know what they're doing, but they're all engaged with each other. But it's, in my head, like, the kindergarten room's gonna be like kindergarten cop. And it was very much not that. And the, you know, the elementary school, I got a lot of hugs. It was very exciting. And it was sort of, I was like, oh, God, I'm gonna go to the junior high. It's gonna be a different vibe. But we went into one of the math classrooms, and the kids were so excited about what they were working on, that they were making eye contact with me, and they were like, look what we're doing. And they were fully engaged, which is not totally typical for junior high students, but they were really excited about what they were learning. So I thought it was so much fun. So thank you for letting us.
Yeah, I, I mean, we're happy to do it, you know, every year. If you guys wanna take a look, I think it's good for you to be there. Another highlight, Carrie and Andrew got a standing ovation at lunch from the fifth graders. That was amazing. I believe one of the Steinbach, the Steinbach boys started that, but it was great. I think we got to crown some kindergarten.
We did.
And AJ, when they were learning A's. Yeah, it was really fun. It was really fun. And you never know what you're gonna see, so I love just, it's always nice to see it through other people's eyes, too. So, but for sure, all of Jackie's work with the teams, looking at the guaranteed Bible curriculum is evident. And certainly all the work that we do with positive behavior support and the work that Tracy's doing.
That's, you just, you can see a lot of it. It was awesome. Yeah.
Especially Chops, the music teacher at elementary, too.
Yeah, Megan. Yeah.
We went in there, she was doing, it was ready for students to come in, doing some like breathing exercises, just some, just calm down strategies, and I think I started doing some of the breathing track. Maybe feel really good.
Yeah.
I think I could do this every day.
Yeah.
So I thought that was just an amazing way to start the class and get the kids ready to learn.
Great. Yeah, we'll send it out next year. Awesome.
All righty, on to the action items. The first is the personnel report, which I am going to read. So for non-licensed new hires, first one is Megan Greaser, guest teacher, effective date nine-thirty-two thousand and twenty-five, at a salary rate of a hundred and fifty-five dollars a day. Next is Gayethree Parathiban, guest teacher, effective date ten-two-two thousand and twenty-five, salary rate one-fifty-five a day. Next one is Daniel Alamo, guest teacher, effective date ten-nine-two thousand and twenty-five, one-fifty-five a day. Chris Paputek, guest teacher, effective date ten-fifteen-two thousand and twenty-five, salary rate one-fifty-five a day. Next is Jordan Mooney.
a day. Next is Jordan Mooney, paraprofessional at LBES, effective date ten six twenty twenty-five, replacing Asha Brown at twenty dollars an hour. The next one is Jasmine Flores, paraprofessional LBMS, effective date is ten fourteen twenty twenty-five, replacing Andrew Paxton at twenty dollars an hour. We have no resignations. We have one termination, Andrew Paxton, paraprofessional at LBMS, effective date nine thirty twenty twenty-five. Uh, no licensed new hires, FMLA. First one is Michael Nillis, fifth grade teacher at LBES, effective dates two eighteen twenty twenty-six to five eighteen twenty twenty-six. Next one is Heather McEnroe, paraprofessional LBES, effective dates ten twenty-one twenty twenty-five to ten twenty-seven twenty twenty-five. We have one leave of absence, Amanda Suarez, BCBA at LBES and LBMS, effective dates three nineteen twenty twenty-six to six five twenty twenty-six. Um, may I have a motion to approve the personnel report as just presented?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
It's the BCBA.
Board certified behavior analyst. So that one is the one that replaced our crisis counselor. It should be, I think, student support.
Supposed to be student support.
Yes.
All right. Amy, do you mind calling Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Lauren Hirsch?
Yes.
Tim Pennett?
Yes.
That motion has passed. Um, next is the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the open session meeting minutes, uh, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, regular board of ed meeting minutes, September thirty, twenty twenty-five, budget hearing minutes, the treasurers report, the impress report, bills report and P-card report. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda or would anyone like it to pull anything out for separate vote?
Um, I had a question, a couple of financial questions for, for Jay. Um, so it's the end of our first quarter for three, this is three months, right? So a couple of items, um, were over budget for a year to date and I, I just don't know if those are, um, you know, like a, a trend that's maybe an issue there or if there's something else going on. But one was the, um, human resources and tech was over by about, uh, thirty-one thousand dollars or fourteen percent. And the other one was, and I didn't know what this was, PD library and assessment. I, I think this was in the, the, uh, report by function. Um, was over by thirty-eight thousand, about thirty percent. Are, are those causes for concern?
No. Those, that's just a function of it being difficult to forecast by month. Um, although it is the end of the first quarter, it really, it's really the end of the first of only one month of school. So, um, we just had some expenses that came in prior to what I expected then. Most of it's timing. Some of it is, it's either timing or a one-time item that's not going to continue to increase. And that percentage will go down. There's very little expenditure right now of year to date. So thirty thousand is a big percentage, but by the end of the year, it's going to be a percent or less. So.
Now, what is, what is this PD in that professional development?
Oh, professional development, sorry. That's not, that's not going to, we do a lot of professional development during the summer.
Okay, okay. Um, so those should all come back into line and come down to budget.
Yeah, they'll either, either the percentage will be a lot smaller if it's a one-time item or it's just a timing thing and we would have spent it later. You know, if it was forecasted to be spent later, it was spent. So those are, just like the tax receipts are kind of hard to predict. So we were lower in our tax receipts. We expect to get all our taxes, it's just a timing, a bunch of forecasts versus.
Well, that's good. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Uh, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five as presented by administration?
So, second.
Amy, do you mind calling Bo?
Tim Pennett?
Yes.
Lauren Harris?
Yes.
Andrew Carlson?
Yes.
Richard Driver?
Yes.
Laura Brinkstone?
Yes.
All right, that motion passed. Uh, next is FOIA request. We have three FOIA requests since our last regular board of ed meeting. Details are in the board packet. This FOIA section of our agenda is simply a report item and does not require approval. However, are there any questions before we move on?
I have a quick question about that. And I feel like we talked about this last time. Do we know how much of these are legitimate requests or bots?
Well.
We do, we do question the senders.
Okay.
Um, as to, to verify.
Okay.
We ask them to send us verification of like their humanity.
Right.
Um, before we respond. So.
Okay, thank you.
There's a few, there's been a few that haven't been able to verify. Okay.
All right, on to public comment. At this time, we welcome comments from our staff, parents and constituents. The board president will determine the format and ground rules for comments in the best interest of the audience and the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. Don't say anyone kind of give some comments. Uh, may I have a motion to adjourn the October twenty-first board of ed meeting at eight o'clock PM?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?